One second, you got a technical issue?
Somebody's phone is ringing.
You guys are good.
Okay. We have the time at 6:08 PM. We're officially starting now. If you'll stand with me and join in the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Mr. Easton, would you like to call roll? I think you're on mute.
It helps if you're unmute. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Raymert?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
We are all present for this special meeting, and I will point out that this special meeting was noticed to the Germantown Press on February 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. As everyone knows, it is a special meeting to discuss the JED with the townships and municipalities this evening. I think we have representatives from each group except for potentially Farmersville right now. Brian, have you heard from Nick, or do you know if he's joining?
I haven't heard anything from him. I don't know. I can't shoot him a message.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we can go ahead and start with the initial discussions. Hopefully, he'll be able to join here shortly. Brenda, thanks for sending over. I guess let's run through what information we've traded over the last month since we last met. The last time we met and discussed, we had went through the initial draft contract for this JED, made some minor, I would call them minor revisions. Other people may call them a little more significant, but for the most part, they were minor revisions, editing, grammatical, et cetera. We had talked about the economic development plan, but at that time, it hadn't been shared. And so after we left that meeting, the agreement was, we would all look at the contract. Brenda would revise based on the suggestions we made, along with sending out the economic development plan for us to review. During our last discussion as well, we talked about another JED in Ohio that was set up around a school district and wanted to look at how it was established. And so we made a public records request and got that JED and sent it out to the folks involved so they could read that and compare and contrast it versus what we're doing. So hopefully, everyone has both our revised JED contract as well as the Burton Township JED for the Northern Ohio JED that's around the school district, as well as the economic development plan. So with that, hopefully, everyone's on the same page. Brenda, I guess, do you have a suggestion as to what you would like us to do first or attempt to do first?
No, I mean, I thought the purpose of...
That's fine. I just want to make sure that there wasn't a specific place you thought we should start. Brian? I mean, I have Brenda. Sorry, go ahead, Brenda.
No, I say I don't have any particular issues or starting point. I think that should be driven by you guys. Where do you want to start and what do you want to discuss at this point?
I've got notes just on the JED agreement and the bylaws. We don't have to sit there, but at some point, I'd like to hit a couple of these.
Yeah, and I feel like, and I don't know, I feel like the contract, we can maybe start there. It's probably pretty simple for the most part, maybe not. But economic development plan, I think, is where I'm going to spend the majority of my discussion and hinge point tonight. So I don't know if Nick has perspective. He just sent me a text back and said that he got caught in a work situation. He'll be able to join here shortly. So as far as the contract, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read through it. Brenda, it looked like you did a really good job of capturing all the comments that I had, and I think, you know, I'd even noted a few that Brian and Nick had made, and it looked like you'd cleaned all that up. I think there's still a few comments. I would make just general comments, but I think for the most part, as far as the language and how you revised it, I think it's all aligned. The one thing I would like to hit on, I had talked about last time, do we have the ability in Germantownship to potentially waive any fees or anything on property tax type things or zoning? And you had, it looks like, added a paragraph on page nine. Brenda?
Um...
Can you speak to me what you added this paragraph for?
Well, I'm not looking at the red line version, so what paragraph are you talking about?
The contracting parties agree the Germans shall have the right and it's sole and absolute discretion to grant real property tax exemptions.
Okay, right. So the statute says that unless all the parties agree, you, the township where the property sits no longer has the normal rights that it has to grant, you know, property tax exemptions, TIF, or request the county grant a CRA or an enterprise zone exemption, which may or may not apply in this case, but should the school district, you know, sell off any of the excess land for development, the township may want to be able to consider certain economic development incentive tools in addition to what would then be the existing JED. And so it's customary for the JED agreements to contain a provision whereby all the parties upfront agree that Germantownship should have all of the powers it normally would have under all the other statutes with respect to this property, and that the JED shouldn't, you know, take away its rights to give property tax abatements if it so chose and if the project and property qualified. So that is the purpose of that particular language.
Okay. And I do like that, you know, I had mentioned last time, for contribution purposes, we were talking about what's the purpose of the JED, and we spent a lot of time on contribution, and we also spent a lot of time on economic development plan into the future and what we're contributing to that. So you guys got that separate document on it. One of the things I had thrown out there was, we are doing the zoning for the school right now, and Haley's estimating somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 in fees for the zoning piece. You know, could we waive a piece of that as for our contribution? You know, I feel like, in my opinion, this thing is still rather light on contribution or defined contribution. I won't say contribution, but on defined contribution. And so that was one of the things I thought that could be defined upfront. So we don't have to decide on it right now, but I guess as you guys stew on things that we think about contribution, that's one of the things I threw out there. And Brenda, I think you cautioned us on that for some reason, but then I saw you added this paragraph, and I didn't know if you maybe eased up on that perspective or not.
I'm taking notes. The issue is sort of fairness and, you know, are, there are some cases that say you can't waive cap-in fees for water and sewer purposes. And so the question is, are zoning application fees the same? And do you run into trouble as a political subdivision if you waive them for some entities but not all entities?
Okay.
And that's potentially more a question for your law director, but I can, I will see what I can find on that.
Okay. Okay, so I saw that paragraph added. I don't know that there was anything else as I looked through the contract that I wasn't expecting. So that's all I have on the contract for now. I guess we'll turn it over to anybody else if they have points on the contract.
I'll jump in here. I'm looking at Section 4, Territory of the District. Just a clarification, it currently says, no, no part of the area or areas comprising the district is zoned for residential use. Is that accurate today? I assume it is, but just a clarification.
You say residential?
Yeah.
Well...
I was saying, there's a house there that was...
Yeah, that's right.
It says here that no, I believe no parcel is zoned residential that's currently part of a JED. Is that accurate today? So, it is to my knowledge, first off, that parcel is not included. The parcels are still separate, as far as I'm aware. And the parcel that has the house on it, I am not sure of its zoning. Give me just a second.
Okay, we'll follow up on that, Brian. That's good.
Yeah, and I'll just, right, because we can't have any property zoned residential when we create it. So if there is a parcel that is zoned residential, we're going to have to exclude it and make sure that all the legals and everything don't include that parcel. In the future, property within the JED can be rezoned, and it could in the future become residential part of it or all of it. There are provisions in the document that sort of say, if a parcel is zoned residential later, however, the terms of this agreement would automatically exclude it from the JED so that residents will not end up paying income tax. That was an early on important point for the parties. They did not want any residents paying income tax in the future. So we put language into the JED agreement that says, should any parcel in the future be zoned residential, it will automatically be, you know, taken out of the JED without further action and no longer be a part of the JED. However, per the statute, at the time it's created, you cannot have any residential parcel.
That parcel that has the house on it is zoned agricultural, as is the school property. So that, that house parcel is zoned agricultural with a residential use. But the zoning is agricultural.
Okay, next comment, it's under Section 6. We talked about this a little bit last meeting. Let's see. This is the liability exceeding $750 we talked about. We may want to make that something a little bit higher just so we can cover the audit fees and any other kind of annual maintenance fees that they may incur. If you guys saw my email, the estimate from another JED that our finance director got was, I believe, $3,500 a year. So just wanted to have a discussion, do we want to raise that 750 threshold so they're not coming back to each of us to approve it to, I don't know, 4,000 or something along those lines?
Yeah, the only thing about that, Brian, was that it was saying that the audit happens every two years, and it was actually like 7,000, but 3,500 a year, 7,000 every two years. So I think to avoid that one getting approved, you'd have to go even higher to like seven or eight grand. But I did circle the 750 because I agree, like, the insurance, the annual insurance and a few other things like that, I don't think they need to come back. But I don't think it's a big deal if they have to come back every two years to tell us what the audit fee is. But higher, yeah, I don't know if it's 2,500, something around there.
Yeah, yeah, just something a little bit higher. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we'd need to settle on a number, but, I mean, I'm comfortable with 2,500 if that's what we all agree to. I assume the JED that they got the quote from is slightly larger than ours, so, you know, those costs may even be a little bit high.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, that, to me, is such a small point, $2,500?
Yep.
2,500? Going once, going twice? If you're okay with that, Brian. Nick, I don't know, you just got on, he's talking about the level of dollar threshold that the JED Board would have to go back to the municipalities and villages and townships to ask for approval. And so it still says 750 in the contract last time we talked about upping that so they didn't have to come back as often and become such an administrative burden on the JED Board. Are you okay with 2,500? Okay. Brenda, you got that one?
Yep, I will make that change on the next version.
Go ahead.
Next, yeah, next comment, it's page four, Section 7. It's talking about contributions. Each contracting party should contribute an aggregate amount not to exceed, and it's blank today, to the district to pay initial legal administrative other costs identifying this request. I don't know where we're at with contributions. I know initially, we talked about splitting the legal fees. One, so one, we'll have legal fees. Two, we'll have, I think we discussed kind of an initial pool that we'd want to set up just to cover any administrative costs that, you know, getting insurance, whatever they're going to have in that first year. I don't know what value we want that to be. To make it nice and round, I figured if legal fees are around 8,500, you start with 10,000, maybe high, I don't know, maybe 5,000, but if you use 10,000, round it up to 20K, you split it four ways, it's 5K each. If you split it based on the splits in the JED, you're talking 7K from Germantownship and Germantown, 4K from Farmersville, and 2K from Jackson. We're going to have to settle this at some point. I just figured I'd bring it up tonight to get your guys' thoughts.
Right, and thank you. That is a good point. The split in the document as it stands is even, but it does not have to be even. It can be written to reflect the revenue percentage split.
In my mind, 10,000 is probably plenty more than they'd need to start with, but they would also set them up with something, although we're going to set aside a percentage for revenue, so, or for refunds, and that would come after collections have started. So, I don't know, maybe 5,000's more appropriate.
And that 5,000 would be from each municipality, correct?
No, so I'm thinking 5,000 in total. So it'd be the 8,500 legal fees plus a starting balance of 5,000 just to cover their insurance costs or anything else. So we'd split the 5,000. Well, I assume we'd want to split the total value, but that's kind of the number we need to pick. Do we want 5,000, 7,500, 10,000, whatever it is, just whatever we think those initial cost would be. And 10,000's probably high now that I'm thinking about it, because the, any refunds that are issued are going to come after collections happen. So 5,000 may be more appropriate.
Yeah, I don't have a problem necessarily with that. I think at some point, we're going to have a serious discussion about what the contribution is versus the economic development plan, and which one is more important to the support of the JED. But, I mean, what you're proposing, I don't have a problem with. Anybody else have any other thoughts on that?
So, can you clarify, are you saying 5,000 from each jurisdiction for a total of 20? Or are you talking about a total of 5,000 split according to your revenue percentage shares?
So in my total, I was counting the anticipated final cost of legal fees plus a total of 5,000. So it'd be 13, 5 roughly what we anticipate.
Okay, I got it.
So with the anticipation, if these being 8,500, it'd be 8,500 plus. That's to answer the question there from Mr. Cross. 8,500 plus 5,000 in total, so whether we split it, I mean, we're talking minimal difference here. Whether you split it four ways or split it based on the splits in the JED, it doesn't really matter to me.
But let's put a pin in that one just for now, and come back to, just when we start talking economic development, contribution, let's try to group them to make sure that we do something that is reasonable across that board. But I think, I mean, I think what you're, if we just decide to do a somewhat minimal contribution piece, I think that's a fine approach to it. I don't think anybody seems to have a problem with it, Brian. So you want to cover any other issues?
Yeah, two paragraphs lower, we talk about Germantownship holding records or documents of the district. One, did you guys have any more discussion on that, or are you okay with that? And two, in the second sentence, it says, "German shall maintain those records or documents as public records of Germantown." That should just be German to be consistent.
Yep.
Let's see.
Should the records be held by Farmersville since they're going to be the ones administering it?
Well, they'll hold certain income tax records, but we're talking about the record for the JED Board in terms of your meeting minutes and agendas and public record notices and any resolutions the Board might adopt, those kinds of records, your audits, that kind of stuff. Farmersville, yes, as part of the income tax agreement, will keep all of the income tax records, but someone else has to, or someone, it could be the same, has to keep all of the other JED Board records.
And just to clarify, if we're just housing them, our fiscal officer is not responsible because it's a separate governmental entity?
Right, and the JED Board will have a secretary who is responsible for all of that.
So they just need access to a room or something in our township building to store the records? Is that correct?
A drawer in a filing cabinet, yep.
Okay.
May I ask a question about that? Brenda, this is Mark Easton, the fiscal officer here at Germantownship. As I read this paragraph, it indicates that the township would provide copies under the public records laws. Would that not then be better to say the secretary of the JED Board would provide copies under the public records laws?
So you can, however, you have to keep in mind that most of these JEDs are creations of, you know, other political subdivisions who have some staff. Your officers for the JED may or may not be employees of any of those. In other words, you know, one of your board members is going to be a school board member, presumably, or the superintendent of the school, and then another one is going to be another school-related person appointed by the superintendent to represent all of the school employees. They're not necessarily going to be working at the township ever, and if the records are kept at the township, it, you know, will be difficult, depending on who is the secretary, to, you know, make, comply with all those public records requests, and again, all those, there probably won't be very many. But, so you just have to take that into consideration. Is it easier to make that the responsibility of somebody who actually has day-to-day access? Or do you want it to be the secretary, knowing that the secretary, one, can change over time, and, two, depending on the makeup of your board, may or may not be somebody who's available day-to-day?
Well, Brenda, won't the Board, the JED Board, need someone similar to a fiscal officer for that political jurisdiction of the JED to do things as, such as distribute funds to the four communities to handle the audit? I mean, that's not a responsibility that Germantownship, at least I don't as fiscal officer, want to assume that responsibility for something I didn't create.
Right, so that's a conversation that the parties have to have and recognize, that there are added duties and responsibilities, and who's going to be undertaking them. If you want, you know, potentially to shift that back to Germantown, you know, that's a discussion item. That was how it was originally drafted, and then there was some discussion at the last meeting that caused me to think maybe you wanted those records housed in the township since that's, you know, sort of where the property is. But it can be any of the parties. In most JEDs are only two parties, and, you know, one of the parties sort of takes on the administrative responsibilities and assigns a staff person within the political subdivision to manage those administrative duties of the JED, sending out the public notices for the meetings, scheduling the meetings, responding to public records requests, getting, you know, checks signed and distributed and that kind of thing. We're not talking about the income tax distribution. That's going to be handled by the income tax administrator, i.e. Farmersville, but we're talking about, you know, when you have bills to pay as a JED Board for your insurance or your audit fee, somebody to coordinate for the auditors to come in and review the records and do, you know, get them whatever they may need. So the four of you need to decide how you're going to handle that, because the JED Board members, per se, are probably not the best suited, although it may turn out from time to time that whomever is decided upon may occasionally be a board member. But again, in your case, the municipalities get a board member between them on a rotating basis. So if it's Germantown who takes on this responsibility and role, they may appoint that person as their board member, but, you know, they won't have the appointment every single time. Every other term, somebody from Farmersville will be on the board, and they won't be the one responsible for all of that paperwork and so forth. So in most situations where you only have two parties, they each have a board member from their organization at all times, and that's not necessarily going to be the case for your JED. So you do need to think about who's going to take on this responsibility.
Well, from a standpoint of the fiscal officer office here in Germantownship, I don't want to take on that responsibility for something I'm not creating or paying bills for something that is outside of our jurisdiction, nor do I want to commit to my replacements down the road to be able to have to do that also. Whether Germantown wants to take that on, I don't know, but I feel uncomfortable having the part-time fiscal officer here take that role on with this separate jurisdiction.
And that's fair. As I said, the fiscal officer is an elected official in a lot of places. It's an employed staff person who's assigned to do that. In some places, it's the economic development director, in some places, it's the clerk of council. I mean, it just, yeah, it varies. So Brian, is that something that, you know, Germantown is able to take on? Do you want me to change that back to being that Germantown will hold the records? Do you want me to change that back to being that German Town will hold the records?
I assume we could. I'll, I'll verify that, but I, I assume they would be willing to do that for a slight administrative fee.
I mean, long-term, you guys are collecting money from income. I mean, you have nothing in the long-term expenses for the township. Farmersville are going to be potentially up. German Town, I'm not sure what long-term expenses you guys have other than sitting back and collecting a check from this. So I'm not sure an administrative fee would be necessary in this situation.
I mostly said that to bother you, but no, I mean, I, I think the, the shared, the shared responsibility for fire services out there, which, which could always increase. Depending on what happens with these schools, we could have a significant cost of tearing down a building, depending on who they sell it to and whether or not they actually maintain it, which is a big concern right now. But no, I, I, I assume we would be willing to do that. I'll just verify that, but I assume that would not be a problem.
What do you think about just making, or putting the responsibility on the JED secretary, but housing the information at German Township? That secretary would just have to schedule a time that would be convenient for any, you know, fiscal officer in the future at German Township?
If, if you're asking me, Nick, whether I'm comfortable with that, we can put a file cabinet here that has the JED records. But when it comes time for the audit, when it comes time to paying bills, when it comes time to address any public records requests, I think that responsibility needs to fall to someone connected directly with the JED. I, I would not, if I were German Town, want to take that responsibility on either. But that's certainly for them to decide. But I don't want to see German Township having to take that responsibility on.
And we don't have the staff to do that. So German Town would have the staff to be able to handle that.
When it comes to the financial, the, the financial statements, the annual budget, things like that, is that a, I mean, that's, that's going to be another task that the treasurer should do. I think we lay out that the treasurer handles those things. But I guess the question is, will the treasurer, whoever it is, be capable of carrying out those duties? Brenda, what have you seen? I mean, do, do entities appoint a staff member in that role just to prepare those documents? Or does it really, that large treasurer that handles that?
Usually the, you know, the city will appoint either its finance person or its economic development person. And often, you know, the township will appoint, you know, its administrator. If it's a large enough township, they may also have an economic development director. And they'll appoint that person as the board member. And then that person is responsible for all those functions.
So.
On the sides of the township and the city involved.
One thought, just to move this along, is we probably could have a, regardless of who the treasurer is, we could have, I, you know, we, we have a finance director on staff, they're part-time. But somewhere in here, it does talk about, you know, billable hours or whatever. Rather than administrative fee, we figure out just some, you know, time and materials costs. They prepare the budget, they do the, just so it's not coming out of the, the, their salary for the city. But you figure out just a billable hour for whatever the time they spend on it, and we call it a day. It'd probably be really minimal. It wouldn't be worth setting up, you know, some kind of fee or anything like that. Just bill the hours of the JED and that, and it's taken care of. I assume our staff could do that. I, I just want to verify that, if that sounds okay to everybody.
Try to make it the secretary's responsibility, with his ability to engage, you know, employees of any of the contracting parties.
I mean, realistically, how many bills, you know, would the JED board have to pay? Other, I mean, the other insurance yearly, what are their bills or a regular bill that the JED board would have to be paying?
Right, I mean, for your particular JED at this point in time, as it's contemplated, there probably aren't a lot. There'd be the insurance and, yeah, your audit fees when they come. There'll be, you know, monthly bank statements to review. But there won't be bills every month. There will be bills a couple of times a year. And as I said, you know, it depends on how many times you have meetings. Initially, you'll have a few meetings in the first year just to get things up and running. But then you may settle into a, you know, once a year or twice a year meeting schedule. In which case, you know, there's not a lot of meetings to be, you know, announced and publicized. There's not a lot of agendas and stuff to keep track of. Public records requests are probably going to be minimal. So it's not a lot, but everybody just needs to be aware that it, it is another political subdivision and it is responsible for complying with all the same rules. And somebody's got to be the point person.
All right, Brian, I mean, please take that away, see what you want to propose on that. I think Mark's made it clear, and I, I totally respect and support his perspective, that it's not an administrative thing that we're willing to take on in any way, shape, or form. If that's something German Town will manage and how you want to approach it.
I, I will work on that paragraph.
Okay, I'll, I'll take it back and come up with something. Um, let's see, my next, hang on one second. Uh, section nine, we talk about the board, this is also in the bylaws. The board establishes a mailing address. Does it have to be like a P.O. box, or can we use a township, or city hall, or village hall?
Right, you're going to use one of the four parties, usually the one who has the records. So if we're switching the records to German Town, you're probably going to use their mailing address for anybody who needs to communicate with the board.
Okay, good. Next, let's see, two paragraphs down, we tell, it says, "The chairperson," this is dealing with special meetings. "Chairperson may call special meetings of the board by giving notice of such meeting as provided in the bylaws to each member delivered to his or her residence." And does it have to be hand-delivered? Two, I think it conflicts because I think the bylaws actually allow a email notification rather than like a physical delivery. And when we go through my comments in the bylaws, I'll point out where that's at. But just, we, we just need to, I prefer it be more flexible and we need to just clean up the, the two.
Okay, yep, at this point, we will.
So just a point of clarification down in section, with the income tax, it says, "The board shall adopt all the provisions of the income tax legislation of Farmersville." So if for whatever reason Farmersville decides they don't want to do collections or, they don't, they don't want us to use their tax legislation, or they leave whatever, does this require a total revision of the actual JED, the way this is written?
Yep. Yes, now, if Farmersville doesn't do it anymore, you know, the JED board can still use its code as it existed when they adopted it. Or the JED board can decide that they need to make, you know, a change and redo the income tax provision completely. But my guess is it's not going to be, you know, not going to be all that different from place to place, given, you know, what the state has done to everybody. To have something else collect under a different set of rules for just those employees. And the rules probably aren't going to be all that much different.
All right, kind of the same question, the next paragraph, it talks about Farmersville's tax administrator shall serve as the administrator of the income tax. Do we want to, and it's not that I don't have faith in whatever, you know, I'm sure Farmersville's going to be able to collect this. However, if they decide to out, or decide they don't want to do it anymore, and they come to us, we've already said we would probably outsource it. So do we want to leave that paragraph more generic to just basically say Farmersville, either Farmersville's tax administrator shall serve as the administrator, or their, you know, they, they could hire an administrator. And I'm, I'm just trying to think of a way to, to make it a little more flexible, just in case, for whatever reason, they decide they don't want to do it.
I thought we did. Yeah, so if you look at the bottom of page eight, "The board shall enter into an agreement with German Town or Farmersville to administer, collect, and enforce the income tax on behalf of the district, provided that such agreement may be assigned or subcontracted to another agency by German Town or Farmersville to perform those functions."
Okay, so, so that sounds good. It's just, we also lay out in this paragraph that, that their tax administrator is the administrator. It's not, it's not a big deal, just, I actually like what you just.
So we'll change that to say initially, let's see, where are we? Where do we first name them? German to the highest rate, whoever is.
I think it's in the paragraph after the one you just read, Brenda.
Farmersville shall initially.
Yeah, and then the, and then the board could, I assume, modify as.
Right, okay.
All right, I think the, I only have one more here. Let's see, section, still in section ten. This is talking about the area set aside. So just to clarify, we are setting aside, this is a state mandated amount, 2% for long-term maintenance, 4% for dollar value for tax collection, and 2 and 10% for the escrow account. It goes on to talk about the, depending on what that balance grows to, the, is only escrow refundable to the parties? It's collected for long-term maintenance. If for whatever reason that grows and the JED board never spends a dime of it, maintenance funding ever be redistributed back to the entities, or is it only the escrow account?
Well, it can be, but remember that, that 2% is what you're going to be using to pay your insurance and your audit fees, so.
Right, probably won't grow much at all, if any.
Right, I mean, initially, we're concerned you may not even collect enough out of that 2% to pay the bills, you may need more than that. But, so, yeah, I mean, it just depends on when you look at the math of what you're expecting the JED and how that 2%, you know. Some amounts have to be collected for the long-term maintenance of the district. There, you know, if it gets, if the balance gets to be above a certain amount, because, I mean, to put it as far as it says it's a balance in the long-term maintenance account of the district, exceeds X amount, you know, anything over that amount will be distributed similar to, you know, escrow surplus, if you want.
I don't think 2% is going to be sufficient. I mean, 2% of 125 is, what, $2,500 or less dollars? Looking at the audit, we should be setting aside, bring up 3,500 a year plus to get the insurance. It's close to 5,000, so, I mean, you probably need something more like 5% for the, the annual fees. Then you got 4% going to the tax administrator, which we're assuming is Farmersville. Which is 9%, and then another 2 to 10%. But will be held in the escrow. So unless anyone else has a better plan, I think 5% needs to be what, what is held there for the long-term maintenance.
Which is similar to what we did with the escrow account. Make it 2 to 5%. That way, if it, if the balance gets high, the board can adjust it down a percentage. If it gets low, they can adjust it up a percentage and leave that flexibility there.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I, I think it's going to need to be more than five then. Unless you just want them to cut a check if they get short, because I don't know that five will really be able to cut it, especially if, if audit and insurance fees outpace revenue growth in the district. So, I, I mean, I don't know if it's another 2 to 10, you just give them the ability, again, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the rest of the JED documents will, I mean, you have to set this amount aside. To the extent that you don't have enough to pay your bills, you're going to pay the bill with what's in that fund plus money from the income tax before you distribute it. But, yeah, if you want, we can put language in here that says, you know, 2 to 5%. And then in the early years, you can start off with 5%. And if everything goes well, you can reduce it. If it doesn't go well, you can leave it there at 5%. I, I'll put in some range.
We're not locking ourselves in anything because they're, they're going to pay the bills first before anything anyways, so. Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's just a question of, you know, timing. If you distribute on a monthly basis and you distribute and then you get a bill, you know, how long will it take you to get enough? So you want to kind of have this pot sitting there accumulating that doesn't get emptied on a monthly basis when you distribute the revenues so that when you get a bill, you have some money to put towards it before you take it out of the distributions. Again, you know, a situation of, you know, making the distributions on Friday and getting a bill on Wednesday, and it's like, oh geez, we just emptied out the pot. Now we have to wait until we collect some more before we can pay this bill. So, yeah.
All right, that's, that's all I have on this document. I will, there's one other item to point out while we're still on it. The, the JED agreement calls out the secretary and the treasurer as two separate positions. But if you go to the bylaws, the secretary of treasure is, seems to be combined into one. Just another item, just for consistency. I think in the bylaws, we'd probably want those to be two separate positions. You guys, Tyler, did you want to, I've got a handful of other comments in the bylaws, but if you want to talk economic development or something else, first, we can do that, or I can run through these real quick.
I just feel like, I don't know, to me, that's a big item, I think the rest of them, I think, are relatively small. Is that fair? Does anybody else have any other big items they want to discuss, apart from small items on, you know, just splits or work smithing, that kind of thing?
No, so probably the biggest in the remaining comments is talking about the quorum requirement, so just some inconsistencies, whether it's three or four. Other than that, probably nothing significant, I mean, I can send these comments out to you guys, and and it's really probably something Brenda can just clear up.
Okay. Yeah, so last time, you know, where I was hung up was really on this economic development, I think Brenda did a pretty good job for us to explain that, you know, we are well within our rights, that this is, you know, the way this is laid out, yes, it's somewhat vague, but it's definitely supportable, and she explained that more eloquently than I am right now, but, you know, you guys had promised to send out the economic development plan. I've read through it, and I think it's a fair start, I'm not sure how robust it really needs to be, but I had several questions on it, and ultimately, I feel like that's where, if we're not going to do anything more on a contribution than what we talked earlier, which is basically legal fees, I feel like the economic development plan is where we need to spend some time and make sure we're all aligned and on the same page with it, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to read it, I mean, I've got a lot of grammatical type things in here again, but I don't need to go through all the grammatical type issues, I can send those afterwards, I think the bigger thing is really the heart, the meat potatoes of it, you know. I think when it talks about, let me get to the first point here. The values, I think we're aligned, I mean, we could probably look at those and make sure that's, I mean, those are values, I think, of all of VB District is what that's supposed to describe, not just of the JED. So I think that's fine, that's where our values are. I think the goals related to the economic development, well, I had some questions here, it just seems kind of fluffy, to maintain and expand the community service and infrastructure to ensure high quality of life, I mean, I guess, can anyone define what that means, or is there any way to define it, and then it says to promote existing businesses and expand the number of kinds of high-quality companies, well, there is no existing businesses there, so what does it mean to promote existing businesses, like, I think it's, I have a little bit of trouble with that one.
Well, the school is already there, the school is already there.
But that's not an existing business, though, right? That's a nonprofit entity, it's education.
Well, nonprofits are businesses.
Okay.
And it's not a non-profit.
I'm being educated, I'm not being, like, I would have never thought that that is a business in the district, but, okay.
Well, they perform a service, they pay employees, you know, the employees pay taxes, it's a business.
Okay, okay. To encourage and promote businesses within the JED that will be complementary to the educational function of the school district, I'm okay with this one, this one's kind of more of a work smithing, but I just feel like, does it need to be complementary for it to be something that we would support? I don't know that we need to, you know, define that as complementary to the school, but maybe that is one thing that we do want to define, but I feel like that's too closed. I think that kind of leads into the Schedule A piece, where I struggle, Schedule A was the one that I feel like probably is the most important to pay attention to, it says provisions, the second paragraph, provision of the periodic capital improvements and long-term maintenance of roadway, sidewalks, intersections, signage, and other public infrastructure within and adjacent to the JED boundaries. I guess I just generally ask, what does this mean, because there is no roadways that any of us are accountable to maintain, my understanding is anything, any roadway in the JED District is county roadways. So I just want to make sure that, whatever this is saying on the Schedule A is even things that we're able to achieve and set up in a way that we all are aware of what we're signing up for, and that we are in agreement that we're going to do those things, because I'm not so sure, the second one, provision of periodic capital improvements and long-term maintenance of water systems and other public infrastructure, I think, you know, as long as you're okay with that, that's for you, Nick. Provision of enhanced emergency and safety services to respond to the needs of the increased number of students and staff. So I guess provision of enhanced, I'm okay with saying that we're going to support the school district with emergency services, or do we have some way of providing provision of enhanced, I don't know that we can define what enhanced is and prove that we ever enhanced anything. Provision of traffic management systems and services to allow for efficient safe flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic to and from and within the JED. So on this one, again, we've talked about Weaver Road, for instance, it's outside of the JED District, that is a township road. If we ever thought that Weaver needed some maintenance, you know, there's a little bit of a hill there, people already complained about that. I don't know if that even qualifies as support of the JED, because it's not in the JED District, but I could see where that maybe fits there, but again, inside of the JED District, if it has to be specific to the JED District, we have no township roadways, they're county roadways, so I don't know that we can, we can agree to support this as a stand, so that's the Schedule A. I like the way it reads to some degree, but on the flip side, it's like, I don't know that I could prove we ever did any of it, and that we could even do any of it, if we're even legally allowed to do any of it. I just struggle with the economic development plan.
So Tyler, think of Austin Landing JED over there, when that JED went in place, there was absolutely nothing there, less than what we have today within our JED, right? So, I mean, when I read this, I saw it as, you know, if something, if a business were ever to come in, if they put a health facility out there, if the school sells off the entire backlot and some subdivision goes in, whatever, then there could be a lot of this actually happening. I mean, today, and the same as Austin Landing, right, there was nothing there, there was absolutely nothing going on. Probably not even guaranteed that anything ever would go on, other than they're right next to 75 there. So I guess, just to look at it from a different angle, that's sort of, when I read this, that's sort of what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think the struggle I have is a couple of things, one, it says provision of periodic capital improvement. If you were to find periodic capital improvements, that would mean on some somewhat regular interval, in my mind, where I read periodic. I don't know that any of us can sit here and say that over the next 10 years that we know what those might be, and if it hasn't happened for 10 years, is there truly any periodic capital improvement? Number two is, when it talks about provision of traffic management systems and like safe and efficient flow, I mean, I don't know who defines safe, I think like ODOT defines safe, and I think they would require, you know, traffic studies of the, like for the school, for instance, when they put the school out there, they're going to have to do a traffic study with ODOT, and if there's something that needs to be done different, the county's going to have to install those things at the school's expense, that'll be nothing of the JED's expense, right? And so if there was, you know, a subdivision put into your, to your point back there, whatever the developer is, would have to foot those costs, that would not be our cost as a JED administrator, so that's where I start to struggle with all this, is like, is this now implicating us to pay for those things if someone did develop something, I'm not saying that shouldn't be something we should have to do as administering the JED and collecting these taxes, are we all holding hands that we understand what that implies and that we're ready to manage that?
I'll let Brenda answer that, I didn't read it as it as it is a requirement, but it would be an option to provide the services.
Right, so the statute requires that, you know, part of putting a JED together requires that there is an economic development plan that contains a schedule of, you know, new expanded additional services, facilities, and improvements. Most people who create JEDs are somewhat nervous about overcommitting for the unknown way out into the future, and so these economic development plans are written in a somewhat vague manner. You know, how vague can you make it and still say it complies with the statute? How specific do you make it before you start to get nervous that we can't afford to do that? That's not even necessary, because we, you know, don't know when the development is going to happen, or what the development is going to need, because if development happens, you know, of this nature, they're going to need X, but if it happens of this nature, they're going to need Y. So it's a, you know, it's a balancing act of, you know, you've got to have some kind of plan that looks like an economic development plan. That plan must have a schedule of new and expanded services and improvements, but there's a lot of unknowns, and so you need a lot of flexibility in that plan. You know, in some cases, there are some very specific, very immediate improvements that are needed, and, you know, in that case, you put those, but those plans, even if they have a specific, oh, you know, we have to build a new road to get from A to B, or we have to extend water line from, you know, A to B, but then you don't know what else you're going to need or when you're going to need it, so even if you have a specific new improvement that needs to be done at the get-go, these schedules often contain a lot of additional vague statements about what the parties may do in the future, because they don't know what's going to be needed or when it's going to be needed.
Yeah, so I really would love for other people to comment on this, not just me on this one, but, I mean, when I think of a couple of things, I think the provision of enhanced emergency and safety, I think there's something in there that we can definitely define, you know, provision of sufficient emergency and safety services to respond to the needs of the increased number of students and staff, so if we will support with emergency and safety services, I don't know that we want to say that we're somehow enhancing, I don't know how we would define that, and it's so big, it could never be, you know, legally, you know, ever challenged and refined, but to me, it just seems like signing up for something that's probably not true. Another one that I would say is something along the lines of evaluating potential tax abatements for qualifying businesses in the future, or something like that. That to me is a defined practice that you're laying out that you're going to evaluate, because you're not guaranteeing that you will or will not. So that's the more comfortable with. Here's the things that we will evaluate over time, that, you know, if it meets, you know, what we all deem to be good for the JED and good for economic development, we could take that, we're not obliging ourselves. It feels like some of these are more obligatory than what we need to be signing up for, and I don't even know, it's almost like a blank check is what it feels like to me and some of them. Anybody else, I mean, for
The traffic management thing, that should be all in the county. And even if a subdivision goes in, like Brian has said, could possibly go out there, unless the school sells off land in the JED, it's not going to be in the JED. So that's not going to count for the JED's economic development. So, I think there's definitely some questions, I think I don't want to tie us in long-term. What was the other one, the periodic capital improvement, same thing that you mentioned, what can that possibly be? Except for water lines, maybe.
I mean, I think we could do some of this stuff, like, I assume we could put sidewalks in there if we wanted to, right?
Sidewalks to nowhere.
Well, I guess from the high school over, whatever, I mean, you could do that, if there was a business that went to the old high school, we might be able to put sidewalks on the school, or I guess you could do those things, but I guess the only thing I would say is that just this periodic capital improvement, I, again, if we can write it in a way that we all feel like this is some of the things that we could do, we can evaluate if those things are good for the JED and business development, and then we'll choose whether to or not to, or the board chooses whether or not to do those things. It just, to me, it's laid out more of, here's the things we are going to do, and we're obligating ourselves to those things, and we don't even really know how that will be defined or measured.
Can I chime in here? Tyler? So basically, I think that, again, I agree with Brenda, that basically these economic plans are made to be pretty general, so it's a plan, and it's not a contract that says that you have to do.
Yeah, I think Mr. Cross is making a good point there. Brenda, maybe you can piggyback on that this is a plan and not a contract.
Before Brenda responds, Mr. Cross, as always, please give me your address. I think you're frozen.
7444 South Star Reserve.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I did. Thank you.
Sorry.
Mark, do you have any more to add? I'm sorry, you got cut off there.
No, not on that, I've got some other comments, hopefully later on I can add, but yeah.
Okay, okay. I think that's a fair point, Brenda, you were starting to mention anything?
Well, no, I just said, you know, he's practiced, and it's not a contract. It's a plan.
Tyler, I'll just speak from Farmersville's perspective, so council did review this document over the weekend, we had a council meeting last night, so we did have an opportunity to discuss briefly. We were kind of on the, I guess we read it kind of on the other side, that Schedule A, we seem to be good with everything there, even you talk about provision of, the second one, provision of periodic capital improvements and long-term maintenance of water systems and other public infrastructure. That would include things like replacing a pump at the lift station that feeds, you know, so that's stuff we're doing anyways, that's stuff you're going to have to do, so I guess maybe we read it as a little bit more vague, and our council tended to appreciate it that way. Even with capital improvements like the long-term maintenance of roadway, sidewalks, intersections, signage, I mean, really, it covers everything. And if somebody held you to it, you know, you're talking about putting up a sign, I guess, if you get down to it, but one thing that we flagged as something we needed to get more input on, if you go up a little bit under the goals to related economic development, one thing that we felt a little uncomfortable with, oh, I'm sorry, it's right below the economic development priorities, to support the best educational opportunities and experiences in the school district, we just wanted to make sure that that is something that should be on the JED, if that was intentional. We kind of saw the JED as all the space around and including the school, but not inside the classrooms, so I don't know if that made sense, if that makes sense to you guys at all, I just, that was one thing Farmersville wanted some clarity on.
Okay, so that is in there because, you know, you're creating the JED and you have an existing business, and it is the school district, and you know, to the line right above it that says you're going to promote businesses, you know, that are sort of complementary to the school district and its educational function.
And that line, that line made a ton of sense, we liked that.
And so what this, to tie them together, it means that, you know, businesses like tutoring services that might choose to locate right next door to the school to offer, you know, assistance to the students who need it, you know, maybe an after-school daycare kind of program may choose to locate near the school and even, you know, within the JED. Healthcare facilities that target young athletes are all the rage right now. And while that's not, you know, necessarily primarily educational, we all know that, you know, extracurricular activities benefit students and make them more well-rounded, so those things are in there to sort of emphasize the So those things are in there to sort of emphasize the fact that the JED has an existing business, its function is education. And so the JED is recognizing that in order to sort of assist the school district with being, you know, the best business that it can be, enhancing the school through other kinds of businesses. It is not to say that you're going to negate any other unrelated kind of business that may want to locate there, but it's also, you know, recognizing the reality that the property is currently owned by the school district and that they're probably going to be more interested in, you know, businesses that seem, you know, let's just say, you know, not scary. They, they may not want, you know, a gun range right next door to the school. They might not want, you know, a used storage facility or a big manufacturing industrial plant right next door to the school. I mean, I don't know, but, you know, there are certain kinds of businesses that might be appealing to the school to be located adjacent to them. And so you, the JED, are recognizing that there is a certain subset of businesses that will enhance the school and its, you know, job. Its job of educating students and so forth. So that, that's what those we're trying to get at. And, you know, happy to have, you know, comments and edits and so forth on that.
Well, as you described it as like a bullet point to support, you know, the, the previous bullet point to encourage and promote businesses in the JED be complementary to the educational function, that, it makes, it makes sense. And, you know, I'm good with moving on with that one.
We say educational and athletic both. I mean, what if they want an athletic trainer in there? It might not be for educational purposes, but that could support the school district or something. Um, I don't know. Again, it probably doesn't even matter again back to the being a plan, but just to make this a little bit more broad on that piece. Um, then on the third bullet point, we'll, uh, encourage development in the JED that will provide support services to the school district. Can it be and/or the surrounding communities? I mean, good part of this purpose of the JED is to, you know, economic development that may not just be for the school, may not harm the school. And that's back to the, doesn't need to be complementary to the school and not just compatible. And that's what I was thinking, so we have businesses that are compatible with the school, not necessarily complementary to them, but also good for the surrounding communities, again, not just supporting the school district. So I guess that's the question, uh, that I'm trying to delineate is, does everything that goes in there, does it need to be for the benefit of the school and complementary to the school? Or is it going to be for the surrounding as well?
No, we were just starting there to, to get it, you know, out there. Can broaden this as much as you all feel comfortable with.
Yeah, I think, I think that third bullet point where it says to the school, and I would put and/or surrounding communities or surrounding Valley View District or whatever it may be to define that. But I think, I think we would definitely consider things to go into the JED that may be good for the community, not just complementary to the school. And then back to that third bullet point under goals versus complementary, maybe, again, wordsmithing, but maybe compatible. There's something that's compatible with the school, may not support or be complementary necessarily, but it's good for the surrounding district.
Okay.
And, and so listen, the, the second, the, the heart of it, that Schedule A is really the heart of it to me. If everyone else is good with it, I'm not going to be the stopgap on the thing, but it, it just, I, I think there's ways to, to maybe word this to say, we're going to evaluate these types of items and maybe that's what provision means. Like, to me, provision means you're, you're segregating and, and providing for. It's like a, a set thing you're going to do, not necessarily you're evaluating whether you should do it or not. But I think if this Schedule A is, you know, a, a description of several types of activities that, that the JED will evaluate to do in the best interest of the district over the period of the district's, over the JED's existence or something like that, that to me would make a lot of sense. Um, whereas provision and periodic and enhanced, all those things seem to kind of define something that will happen that may or may not ever happen.
So Tyler, that sentence starts out with the JED will facilitate. So if it said the JED will facilitate and encourage the following new expanded additional services, I guess you're trying to get rid of the word provision, right?
Well, I, I just think, I, I want it to be more of, these are the types of services that the JED could provide, but they're going to evaluate whether they're in the best interest of the JED over that period of time, rather than, they all will start out with provision for, provision for, provision of, or whatever. And it, to me, a provision means you're, you're, you're setting aside, it, it's like a dumb thing. You're going to set aside for, or you're going to provide this certain, uh, service, not necessarily evaluate or, um, you know, consider it.
Right.
And I, I, I don't know what the right wording is and if provisions it, then that's fine. I, I guess that's just the way I read it, is it's, it's saying it's kind of like a dumb thing. These are the services that we're going to provide for, provision for.
Brenda, do you want to use your lawyer magic on that, uh, sentence and bring it back?
Yeah, I can try some editing there. I'm taking notes.
I, I think one that we could add that helps make it a little bit more robust is, I mean, you've added that paragraph, Brenda, on tax abatements. I mean, you want to put something, again, not provision for, but more of the evaluate potential tax abatements for qualifying businesses that may join the JED district or something like that. I mean, I think to me, that's a strong statement of something that we have in our toolbox that the JED could do, um, but it, it's based on evaluation. I mean-
No, the JED can't do that.
Turn it down.
That has to come from the township. The JED Board has no legal authority to grant tax abatement.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, the only other, sorry, last, very last two things on this one. Uh, on the very first page where it talks about the background, it says the school district is a growing school district in Montgomery County. I, I, I'm not sure on that one. Uh, I think that needs to be confirmed. I don't know if anybody has those stats, but I think I've seen some contradictory stuff where it may actually be shrinking over the last 10 years in a very, very minute way. But I just, I don't know. It seems like that is a statement that I don't know that we can confirm. So might need to check that. I mean, does anybody have those stats or do you want me to reach out and try to figure that one out?
I, when I read that, I was thinking that came from some of the school documentation, from their levy, but I don't know that for sure. So, no, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on that one, on the enrollment, just to make sure it's a factual statement. But, um, the only other thing on under goals, Brenda, the very first one, it says to ensure high quality. Ensure just needs to be changed to E instead of I, but just a very minor.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
No worries. Okay, that's all I've got. You guys have anything on the government plan? You're okay with that?
I, I did have one more thing on that. Um, Schedule B, just need to update the percentages for Jackson Township and Farmersville.
Wait, on what?
Schedule B.
They aren't updated on your copy?
No, it says 35151535.
Oh, what's wrong with that?
It was updated at the agreement, it just wasn't in the, in this plan, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the agreement, um, updated.
Okay.
I have the February 9th, 2021 revised draft for the economic development.
Oh, the economic development agreement. I got it, I got it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it got changed in the agreement, but the economic development plan was not. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Funny, okay, yep, I found it.
Well, the only thing I was going to say about, um, the question about provision of enhanced emergency and safety services, and I think Brenda's going to reword it. I think there's argument to say that if it's one entity providing the emergency, like, uh, hire an EMS, you build rapport with the building, you get to know the layout of it. It's always the same stuff. And so you do build rapport for the kids, P-12, um, with same staff all the time. So I think that's, you can argue it, I guess any attorney can argue any of these any way they want to, but that's, that's the way I looked at it when I saw about enhanced.
If building those facilities out there or any new businesses come in forces them to hire even one person, technically, they've enhanced their services, right? They are hiring right now if anyone is interested. They need people.
They're enhancing right now.
Nick, do you have anything else in either the contract or the development?
That covers all of, uh, our red marks. Uh, Brian got quite a few there. You got a couple, so nothing that's not, already been, already been stated, so we're good.
Okay. Um, so very, 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 I promise you, this is my last one. It's in the contract, uh, under contributions. Um, it says German should be responsible for the acceptance, dedication and maintenance of all existing or future township roads within the territory of the district. Back to the same point, just making sure that we're all clear, there is no existing. So I, I guess it's okay to leave it, but I don't, I don't know if we need to have existing in there.
Before we end this, do you want to circle back to the, uh, contribution values we can give her?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree, I, I mean, what, what you were saying was we got $8,500 in legal fees, the estimate there, right? And then we'll have the first year of insurance, but likely no other immediate expenses upfront. So I, I guess if we call it $15,000 and then said, you know, between 2% and 5% annually is what it'd be withheld, I think that gets us off to the right start, right?
Yeah, I would agree.
So $15,000, and what was the proposal? To do it based on the, the tax split or just equitably or, or equally?
E, either way, it's, it's, it's not a huge difference either way. Um, just because of the dollars.
I think it's bigger to keep it on the same split. Uh, let's just keep it on the same split if everybody's okay with that. I mean-
If not, Jackson Township could pose.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Let, let's keep it on the same split and 15 per, or, uh, 15,000, if everyone's okay with that, should be enough.
No, I'm sorry, missed part of that.
Does that include the legal fees? Yeah, it takes 500 for legal. Um, I, I don't know, we call it roughly three or something like that for the insurance. And I think, Brian, you're waiting on a quote on that, so I guess we could revise it if we need to downline. But call it three for that year at 11,000 or 12,000. And then it, it allows you to have a little bit left over on the first year. And then if we're given the, the JED Board leeway between 2% and 5%, they can decide how much is left over, they can decide how much they want to withhold the next year for, for insurance and, uh, fees and those types of things.
The insurance underwriters were asking for finalized agreement and a bunch of different documentation. They didn't understand what we were asking, so we're, we're going back with, uh, some clarification. Hopefully I'll have that this week or next week or at least.
So one, one thing to do is that you're going to check and see about, uh, managing the administration of records requests and bill paying and those types of things, right, Brian?
Yep.
Um, I, I'll check on the enrollment thing. Brenda, you're going to make all these updates that we discussed tonight. Um, is there anything else that we need to do as follow-ups? And then I think, uh, Mark may have a question or two.
I have a one thing. Uh, there was some question I just made a note here about if we're allowed to waive zoning fees. Is that even something we're worried about anymore or are we, is this going to be our contribution?
Yeah, that, that's a fair point. Um, the only, only way we would, I guess, play in is if we wanted to know if we were even allowed to do it. And that could be something, again, of our defining and evaluation of the economic development. So the development plan is something we could evaluate, you know? But I think it's back to German township, it might not even be JED. So it's probably not something we can include. So I guess back to that point, that's a good point I ever made, Brenda, is you probably don't even look into the waiving zoning fees because that's more of a German township versus JED piece, I guess.
Well, I, I mean, it could be there, if they're allowed to do it, it can be their, you know, it can be part of their contribution to, you know, to deep up the contribution section of the agreement. So I'll, I'll see what I can find out. But that assumes they're willing to waive it. I mean, if they're not willing to waive it, it doesn't matter. But if they're willing to waive it, if it's legal, I can check into that and see if it is legal.
Brenda, would that open a can of worms? I know you mentioned this and I haven't thought of it. If we would waive part of this for the school, which as you said is a business, if another business opens up in five years and we don't waive that, is this opening up a can of worms for the township?
Well, that, that's why we want to look into it and see if it does. You know, on the one hand, you know, you can make an argument that, well, you know, you waive them for the school district, they're a public entity supported by taxpayers. Uh, they're not a for-profit business. But on the other hand, you know, they, you know, have to pay other fees and expenses and all that sort of thing, and their teachers have to pay income tax and all that sort of stuff. So we just want to look at it and see whether, you know, you have the ability to give this person a property tax abatement, but you don't give everybody a property tax abatement. Is this similar to that? Or is it more similar to the water tap fees where you're not really allowed to give special treatment to one business or homeowner over another on water tap fees? So, you know, we have to figure out where the zoning permit fees fall. And then you guys can decide based on what we find out about it.
It gives us a lot of time, Brenda, defining how, you know, insurance and, and minimal fees are getting segregated or separated, but it's like, if, when, when and if it does come to executing on economic development plan, do you feel like somewhere in this contract it hasn't spelled out, uh, other than debt or liability exceeding 750 that we said would go up to 2,500? I mean, is that where it's kind of defining the process on how we would collect or get the monies to, uh, you know, make an investment or an economic development improvement or those types of things? Is that, that just falls under that one clause?
Well, so typically what happens is, you know, the party, the JED, in most cases, the JED Board itself doesn't actually make a lot of capital improvement. Uh, they, you know, sort of persuade, recommend, work with the city, the township, the contracting parties to say, oh, hey, uh, you know, business X wants to locate within the JED, but they need a property tax abatement or they need a water line extension. And so, you know, what programs do you have available to help? In other cases, you know, JEDs that do put aside a lot more money for the long-term maintenance of the JED Board have more money to put towards those things, but those are sort of the exception rather than the rule. Most JEDs don't have a lot of money to work with. And so they're constantly going back to their contracting parties throughout the life of the JED. If it's a JED that has, you know, a lot of growth and development as opposed to a, you know, sort of pre-existing business JED where they've just, you know, put a JED in place, but all the businesses were already there, there's not as many capital improvements to be made over time. But in a sort of cornfield JED where the development happens after the JED is created, the JED is, you know, going back to the initial contracting parties and having those discussions. And of course, the contracting parties have agreed to work with the JED and co- And of course, the contracting parties have agreed to work with the Jed and cooperate, but they have not agreed to any specific, you know, improvement or additional capital outlay for purposes of development. It's a, everyone will be evaluated and analyzed as it comes. And who will and won't assist with infrastructure or tax abatements or whatever else is necessary to bring that business into the Jed, you know, gets decided individually at that time.
That's all fair. I understand. I guess where I'm getting at is if you were to read the entire contract, it's set up in a way to collect taxes, make provisions for annual audit, tax collection fees, and the minimums fees, but then doesn't have any clear provisions on if the Jed Board sees fit to make a capital improvement. Here's the mechanism of how they would do that or how they would withhold more funds. And so that's the only thing, it's like the whole point about setting up this thing is to be able to deliver economic development, yet the contract appears somewhat mute on that piece of it. And so I'm just saying, should we make it a little more robust into what the mechanism of how that money would be withheld or whatever? Maybe you feel like it's already implicitly set up with the other clauses, that's fine. I just, that's the only point I want to make, is we all feel like it is set up to be able to do the economic development plan if it calls for an investment and it's all agreed upon.
And the way that it's currently set up is that the Jed Board would have to go back to the contracting parties, either to get them to contribute at that time or to agree to modify the Jed contract later and change, you know, the revenue allocation. So let's say that five years into this, there are some business, you know, the school's ready to sell the property or a portion of it, and there's some business, and the business says, well, we're coming, but somebody's got to build up a road because we can't access, you know, the parcel. And so the Jed Board says, well, you know, we'd like, you know, the township to pay for that road. And the township says, mm, it's not in the budget. We don't know that we can do that. And so, you know, the county says, no, not, we don't want a county road there. That would have to be a township road, and we're not gonna pay for it. It's not on our priority list, et cetera, et cetera. So the Jed Board then says, well, okay, we'd like to pay for this, but we don't have any money. So now we're going to go back to each of the contracting parties and ask for approval to amend the contract to set aside, you know, a larger portion of the revenue for the Jed Board. So let's increase the two to five percent to, you know, thirty percent of the income tax so that we, the Jed Board, can now actually afford to build this road. And then, you know, reduce the pot that gets split amongst the contracting parties. And maybe, you know, they say, well, we're gonna do this for a period of ten years because that's how long it's gonna take for that pot of money to pay for the road that they want. Or maybe it's a permanent change because we envision other road improvements or something else the Jed Board may need to do. Or, you know, maybe you say, no, it's strictly ten years because based on the size of what they're building and blah blah. There isn't gonna be anything else happening there. They're gonna take up all the developable area. So it only needs to be until we pay for this improvement because it's unlikely that there's anything else we're gonna need to pay for. I mean, those are sort of the options on how it happens. Most of the Jed's, you know, are.
I think it's clear, Brenda. I get what you're saying. I just want to make sure we think about it. I think that's fair. Mark, I think you've got a few questions. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, first, before my, go back on zoning fees. My, that's, those should be included for the school. I mean, they passed a huge levy, and my taxes went up in my last tax bill. I don't think we should be giving them any type of break on zoning fees because we can't afford it. But anyway, getting back to, so basically, some of these comments or questions that the panel may be able to answer, some of them, Counselor Weymer may be able to answer. The first one, will the economic development plan and the Jed contract be available online or just at the fiscal officer's office for inspection before the public meeting, once those are done? I don't mind, you know, if I want to look at it, I don't mind going to Mark's office. But is it going to be available online for the general public? Have you thought about it, I guess, as though?
The statute doesn't have to be available. It doesn't say how, so that's up to you all, how you want to make it available.
I think it's better for Mr. Heeston if he doesn't, you know, have many people going up to his office to sit in there and read the. It would just be.
Yeah, I assume we'll be putting it online, and I imagine probably most of the interviews will.
Yeah, I think that would be certainly beneficial to anybody who's interested. So did anybody get a chance to read the Village of Burton, Burton Township Jed contract? Because I know.
I've definitely read it, but not read it in full detail.
So just a quick summary, the situation is very similar to ours. It's a thirty-point-six acre property, and they're building a new K-12 building on that property. And they have, they're closing two schools in the village, so it's almost exactly like ours. So it gives me a little confidence that what we're doing is legal. The difference lies in the facts that no existing school building was on the new property. And the big difference is that both entities were contributing services to the Jed. The village is contributing their sanitary sewer service and potable water services. The township is giving fire protection and EMS services and as well as road construction and maintenance. So those contributions are a little bit more in line with the traditional Jed like you hear about.
Well, the township already had to provide police and fire to, or fires.
So it wasn't, yeah.
Right. It's not anything new for the township. Agreed, the city is providing water and sewer. But I could not find that the township was providing or contributing anything under that particular Jed agreement.
Ah, so they got off scot-free, basically.
You know, I might, yeah, I might take another read of it. But I looked for the township's contribution, and I could not point to one in there.
Yeah.
But they didn't already provide.
I kind of feel the same way. Mark, do you have any other questions? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah. So as far as the Jed Board and Counselor Weymer may be able to ask us. So the Jed Board members are not compensated, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and the initial terms are staggered, so at least one member is gonna go off every year?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then something the board, you know, or the entities might think about. As far as the first four members are appointed by you guys, and then the board appoints their chairperson as that fifth member. And something that you may want to think about is get a local business leader into that chairperson position, somebody like an executive at DUPs, you know, I think would be a good, just to think, give you something to think about as far as that fifth position. Is there any update on when the construction might start on the schools? Last I heard, it was the summer of 2022.
Yeah, that's the last time I heard, Nick. And Nick or somebody said that last time. Does that sound right?
Yeah, summer of 2022, and the plan is to move in fall of 23, 24 school year.
Okay. So this last statement is, I'm not trying to criticize you, but just this may come up at the public meeting, and I thought it might be important to at least think about it. So finally, this may be the most important decision you may make as elected officials, as it may affect the school employees for generations to come, if this goes for fifty to a hundred years. You have to ask yourselves, is it fair to tax a very small number of people? Like the school's approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five out of the combined population of around nine thousand. That doesn't include Jackson Township, when they will receive no benefit from these taxes? That kind of gets back to the.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a great point. I think that's the one thing I would say, is we made a lot of progress tonight. And I don't want to reopen a huge can of worms, but I think in the spirit of what Mark had asked, if Mark, I think that's your last question, correct?
Yeah, that's my last question.
Yeah, and it's a big meeting one, and it's one we've kind of bantered and debated about for a while. I would say, let's go away and make the adjustments and follow up on the other things. But in the spirit of what he just asked, you know, we've said this often, you know, why would the school board petition into this Jed? Because at the end of the day, Mark, they have to choose to be a part of this Jed. If they don't, the Jed doesn't fly. And so I think that that's the one thing that we need to consider is the question he's asking. And I think, you know, we've kicked it around a few times about putting some money aside that can be used for capital improvements or something like that. I think, you know, we all agree that for the first five years, we're gonna be collecting revenues on outside companies that are coming in here to build this school. And that would be, in my opinion, wise for us to take money from that and set aside, whatever that amount, I'm not sure. But this can go back into the contribution, and Brenda, I know you're gonna adjust this, but we may have a few more things in the future. Make an adjustment to the contribution that's related to us recovering that revenue in the future, but the school can somehow use or direct that improvement or something. Because at the end of the day, we have to have a reason that they're willing to participate in petition into this Jed. And his question's more related to the teachers, but the board and the superintendent's the one that's gonna make that decision on behalf of all their teachers. So I think we just need to ponder that question when we come back next time, feel like, do we have a good answer to that one?
Yeah, if it comes up, I would not recommend putting money back for future construction at the schools because you have no idea what they would want. And again, the whole idea is if you're going to pass this or, you know, form this Jed, the whole idea is to make money for the entities. That's the bottom line, so.
Well, I think we need to be careful there because ultimately, that's not a sufficient reason for the Jed. The Jed is really for the economic development of that district and a betterment improvement of that district. So what I struggle is not to be more clear as to how we're making those contributions in a way that is clear and defined and we're all agreeing.
Well, then that comes back to the basic question that we talked about a year ago February. Is this formed just to be a money grab? You know, so I'll let you guys struggle with that. But I would say these questions may come up at the public meeting. So just to have you be, you know, be ready for these type of questions. Why is this being formed, you know?
The current question is, is it fair to allow the entire school district to move out there and tax them zero, tax them nothing, right? Because all residents of all of our jurisdictions are providing water and sewer and fire and police, and hopefully setting up the potential for future economic development there, yet every employee in that district pays nothing into the community? I would argue that's not right either.
That's a good argument. Keep that in mind, like I say, if these questions come up at the public meeting.
No, thank you, Mark. That's, it's good input.
Yeah. So that's all I have. Thanks for all your work, guys.
All right, thank you for that. Does anybody else have any other questions or anything we need to chat?
Other than that, I think that's why having a resource officer would have been a good idea, something that would have benefited the school. But I guess the superintendent said no, so can't do anything with that.
Do we need to set up another meeting date? Is there a timeframe we need to look at before we all exit?
Before we all exit?
We all, we all get done.
Oh, you mean tonight? I thought you said before we all voted out. That's no big one. You've got a little bit of time, hang on. So I don't know. I guess that's a good point. Do we want to have another one-month drum game? I think, I think to that point, I mean, we do have a few months, but if we want to try to get this nailed, you know, by end of summer before we come up on elections and those types of things, we probably need to keep meeting monthly. I think if we do one more contract review, I think the biggest thing is back to that specific point. If we all feel comfortable, we've asked it multiple times in multiple different ways. I think we all feel there is sufficient, you know, ground for us to stand on, but do we all feel like there's more needed? I don't know. And I think you guys have said no before, so I'm not gonna push it and continue to beat that drum. At the end of the day, if all the lawyers review, our township lawyers review, and they're satisfied with it, I think we'll go forward. So we just need to think about it, but let's meet back in a month, I think. Is that fair? Let's try to get a date tonight, have this thing revised again. And at that one, hopefully, we can kind of finalize everything because there's nothing else to ponder at this point. Unless, Brenda, you have anything else surprising, and then we need to start scheduling the township meetings.
And we have to finish the Exhibit A, the legal description. We got some materials for that, but we need the map with the zoning and other. So we need to follow back up on Exhibit A, the legal description and the map of the district and so forth.
Okay. I guess Haley just stay in touch with Brenda on that stuff, if that moves. Okay. Want to look at the calendar? Haley, can you tell us what's due for next month?
So.
Do you want to do it before our next township meeting?
So the city council meeting is on the fifth. Our meeting is on the 12th.
Is the city council meeting on the fifth, Brian, because of Easter?
The day after Easter.
You don't mute, I think.
What day is that?
Well, April 5th. It would be your normal meeting day, but it is the day after Easter, so I didn't know if.
No, I think we still meet, I think we'll still meet on the 5th.
Okay.
So anytime after that, the sixth, or you said the township meeting's the 12th?
Yes.
Anytime after the 5th is good.
Six, seven. You guys looking? Which one was better?
We get the six.
I have my track schedule with me. I know our first meet's the Thursday, the 1st, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I mean, I'm good with the six. I can make it work. I don't have to schedule it for that weekend, so.
Wednesday, the 7th. There's a park board, so I can do that.
Okay. The fifth and the 7th are out to six. I mean, I could do the eight, too.
I can do the eight, too. Six or the eight.
Either one.
I'm six or eight for you guys. Six is good for you.
But whatever you guys think, obviously.
You guys okay with the six?
It works for me.
Yeah.
Nick? Text Mike or, yeah.
I'm checking. One more calendar real quick. I almost forgot.
Your wife has synced up those calendars for you.
I know, just got the baseball schedule, so.
Oh, you have the baseball schedule?
I can't do the six. Can't do the six.
Okay, six is out. Okay, let me delete that. You can even add a widget to your phone now that has all of your calendars combined.
Yeah, I just got it. Yeah, 6th and 8th are open.
I think we just found out that all, those are blocked for us. I think we're.
The six is bad for me. I can't do six.
You can do eight.
I can do eight.
I can. I just have to practice it.
So can we go to the 8th? Are you guys okay on the 8th?
I am.
Let me just check. Hold on.
The KPM?
I'm good, Kate.
I can do the 8th also.
All right. Brenda, are you okay for the 8th then?
Yes.
Okay, it should give, I mean, it's one month. Hopefully, it's plenty of time to revise and get it out for the meeting. So hopefully, the next one, it'll be a lot less significant changes. I think everyone's in a pretty good place, so appreciate the progress tonight. Does anyone else have any other issues?
Is it six o'clock again on the 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize for being late this evening.
It's okay. You had an excuse. It wasn't because you forgot the time, so you're okay.
Who would do that?
All right. With that, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. See you.